Uh, all right, ladies and gentlemen, I've called the order of the uh Tuesday, January the sixteenth, uh twenty twenty four, right?
Sure.
Um, so Madison County planning business session after the uh, what do you call road thing?
Where at? Doug Fritz?
Here.
Shannon Tanyan?
Here.
Robert Palmer? Billy Ken?
Here.
Brian Adams?
Here.
Bill Plow?
Here.
Uh, one thing, ladies and gentlemen, I did not make it out, but if you can take your cell phone, if you can turn it up silent, so uh, if it goes off, you will be listening right now. Uh, first order of business tonight would be the approval of the minutes from the, here's the, oh, maybe.
There's my code?
My code, yeah.
We got to go a couple months off.
Anyone had any quick comments about that? No?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a say. Call the road.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Brian Adams?
Yes.
Billy Ken?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Tanyan?
Yes. Uh, given that this is the first meeting of twenty twenty four with the Madison County Planning Committee, we elect the offer. Uh, so uh, commission, I'll entertain a motion for the election or recommendation for all of the twenty twenty four.
And this is the chairman in his current role, Robert Palmer, and the law chair in his current standing position, this is when there's any or any or problem you should look for the rest of the year.
Do we make a motion, keep it the same?
That's right. Can we do that?
Yeah, that's usually what we do. Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Call the road.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Billy Ken?
Yes.
Brian Adams?
Yes.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Shannon Tanyan?
Yes. Uh, the next order of business would be for the planning committee to set together for twenty twenty four. Uh, our work schedule for Tuesday, which is month five thirty, and the business session is the third Tuesday each month, the five thirty, and the uh, we need to go to a hall separate?
No, please just go on the show.
And the uh,
And the location?
And the location would be is here, it's Madison County Planning Information Center, uh, five fifty eight, that's in drive, that's over there by uh, So if anyone does not have any recommendations or comments about that, entertain a motion. So we have a motion and a say. Please call the road.
Billy Ken?
Yes.
Brian Adams?
Yes.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Tanyan?
Yes. The next order of business would be the extension of the preliminary subdivision plate for Shiloh Co. Martha Frank says speak on that.
Yeah, Kevin does this every year. He's the, the developer of Shiloh Co- Co subdivision. He wants an extension on his preliminary plate that was approved. Uh, it's been several years now, but uh, so he's getting full, this is probably, this is probably wrapping up in there, I think. Uh, he's seen the extension, so he doesn't have to go back through the preliminary plate process. He can still work off the existing preliminary plate that's already been approved.
Does any of the members have any quick comments in regard to this? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a say. Please call the road.
Bill Plow?
Yes.
Brian Adams?
Yes.
Billy Ken?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Tanyan?
Yes. Okay, the next order of business would be a zone change for the Cro- uh, Cropper Pike. Um, I would say that I leave, we're up to eight acres, uh, well, now east.
That's a, that's the only, that's the only, might as well, entire nation.
Cropper Pike, can we just give us code number here?
Can you?
Uh, zone change with Cropper Pike, parcel ID zero zero three zero, actually, zero zero zero, but I have zero zero present that. We've been following local Cropper Pike, and we have winter ice first then.
Mr. Thomas, can I ask, I just noticed, uh, did the application include copies of the rules? Joint property on this.
Uh, the joint property on the wing. To, if I'm wrong, I don't see the deed entered enough.
I, I just, I just have my other specific description, so.
Well, we have to supplement anything for description in regards to the property.
Do you think, do you think there's, there's an issue because of?
No, I, I, I think that he's being put in the application, I mean, like I said, once he's, and I'm just asking, does the name, the name is the uh, Seven, the property is just track one, uh, and, 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 I would, I would keep that, uh, and it describes Cropper Pike's base, I would, that's something that applicants.
Well, is either named or that's something, oh, that's a, that's a, that's a proposal. It's, it's just, it's a hundred seventeen acres. I'd be happy to supplement any uh deed book and page number of the event that is not already done.
Well, we can get all their franking and we can.
Well, we have the, the page numbers under the address.
Are the deeds the same property description from two different uh, grantors, or is it two different tracks that we talked about?
It's, it's identified as track one.
Two different deed sources, right?
There's two different pages on there.
There's that.
So there are two.
Is that because there's two different grantors? But it's the same track, you're telling me about two different, or two different people?
Same description, same legal description.
Same people, right?
Same legal description containing those several, uh, few folks conveyed the same. Have interest in that.
Sure. All right, let's uh, at the end, we'll proceed. We try.
If we will please and thank you, coordinating some behalf of the petitioners, um, we're looking at a hundred seventeen acres. Uh, located along Mule Shed Lane, which is uh, the only entrance to the proposal. Uh, Mr. Thomas, if you can highlight the track first. Lovely. Um, importantly, the comprehensive plan was amended to change the location and description of what the urban corridor and how the urban corridor ran. It was, it was modified due to the exponential growth, the expecta- expectation of growth in Madison County over the next multiple years. Very specifically, it's identified that this area is the ideal location and is expected for residential growth. As you can see, there are, I think, three different subdivisions, but then about half a mile circumference of this track of land. The area has changed over the last couple of years, which would be the basis of our zone changes currently throughout cultural. What we are proposing, I think, Mr. Thomas, if you will help me, we've, we've actually went a little step further and, and shown a little bit more than we've, I think, we've applied to. But we've shown what our, what our plan is. Uh, we're not coming in with quarter lots. These are going to be large one acre lots. We're looking at all brick homes with multiple entrances to the same subdivision. This would mirror those that have occurred around the area. However, I think the lot size is larger, uh, the home size is expected to be larger, and again, it will be all brick. Most importantly, for the justification as to the zone change, your comprehensive plan very specifically states that we amended the urban corridor due to expected residential growth in this area. That's exactly what we're asking for today. We're asking uh, for a zone change, which will allow for only single family residents. We're not attempting uh, to modify the zone to allow for multifamily, rather, single family residents, just like the other subdivisions that have came for us. Uh, and are within very close proximity to this location.
You have asked, oh, please.
Uh, zone?
Yeah, please add that. It's very important.
Uh, the yellow, I'm sure, real prominent, this blue yellow, there's single family residential zoning, the green is agriculture zoning. This yellow line here is the house, starts the boundary of the, of the corridor. And this is the subject property right here.
And that being inside the country.
Correct.
Which the, or corridor was just, uh, just pointed out, it was specifically modified due to expansion as a part of the future comprehensive plan as to the appropriate use of this area. That is the very fundamental element of a zone change. Comprehensive plan very specifically highlights this area and as an expected area of growth for the very exact purpose that you're asking. Um, the network of utilities, roadways, everything's in place. The area around it over the last years, it has also changed, which is the reason why I would assume the urban corridor has been modified to highlight this area as an area of expansion and future growth. Um, the, there's, there's very little else that I, that I wish to highlight. Um, the area is appropriate, the comprehensive plan states so. All utilities are in place. And we are coming in requesting a zone change for single family and home, not the multifamily. And our proposal, which, you know, I, I don't think at this point it's necessary for us to, to dive into. But we're looking at one acre plus lots. It's gonna be a larger subdivision. It's, it's not gonna be a smaller one. Uh, and there are multiple entrances. I think a couple of years ago, you were, they were washed out of the bridge. And this single road is carrying all the track. Was there a support that? We also front loaded this, and we're trying to ask where the appropriate entrances would be. The county directed us to put in these entrances as dictated on the maps that are in front of you. Uh, so I think everything is, is, is very much appropriate, very specifically due to the letter of the law. The comprehensive plan dictates this is an area for this type of growth. And that, that, or the corridor has been extended for this very idea of this area is intended to develop. I'm sorry, have you answered your questions? Have my clock. Have it answered your questions, otherwise we will call my clock.
So at this point, um, Mr. I'm going to call somebody up, just follow the floor again.
Please. Sure.
If you would, please take your name and address for the rest of the. If you would, please raise your right hand, you wear a yellow coat, that's the truth.
Mr. Short, if you don't mind, to highlight anything relevant.
Right.
Richardson?
Yeah. Uh, highway blank, but that's a lot, that's a lot of.
It's a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, it's, it's about. Yeah, so the, the strip of yellow that's there.
Three miles.
Do you see that? That's in front of us.
Yeah.
In the corner, that's actually.
You'll have your. We'll let them go, then we'll call, uh, let, let someone else up, that's why you'll have an opportunity to be, uh.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Short, um, the tracker is a little bit, are you aware of how many acres certain time?
Yeah, hundred, approximately, hundred fifteen.
Hundred fifteen acres. Now, uh, this track of land, what, what, um, subdivisions are located in close proximity of that?
Uh, Millstone, just right across the street there. I read about it, maybe with some of the other ones there, like Chrisbrook Estates is right down the road from it, down there on the left. Then I know, uh, subdivision actually right behind it there. I done that part, moving, it's western hills. Uh, some people know it's there.
So there's at least three subdivisions within close proximity?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Now, your, your track here, it has multiple entrances off which roads?
Uh, it's got one off each road.
And which, which roads?
Uh, of Crusher and one off Mule Shed.
And, and how did you determine where the appropriate access would be?
We met with Mr. Shepherd of the Road Department, and he advised us where to put those entrances.
Now, this area, um, development out there is not being correct. And o- over the last, well, when did you put in the last part of Bereston there?
Uh, that should have been probably fifteen years ago.
And since then, has there been additional developments?
Um, no.
Or additional finishes of developments? So if, over the last fifteen years, how many, um, what's that, looks like over, is there eight lots in Bereston, you would say? And the other subdivisions are very similar size in scope? Very similar size of scope?
It's, they have bigger lots, uh, in Bereston, they let you go to smaller lots. Now, in this, we're, we're, are requiring one acre plus.
We're gonna be, we're, we're playing on the, but now I'm gonna talk about just the area. So has it changed with its nature and scope? Over the last fifteen years?
I live down there for ten years. My son still lives down there.
It's not, it's not solely agricultural anymore, though. There's multiple subdivisions.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's a lot of, a single house is on that road that people are building, that their, uh, their land is right on the road or something, one acre lots off of it, so.
And, and there's multiple of those along Crusher Pike, Mule Shed?
Yes, yes, sir.
Now, the, due to the nature of this, those changes, um, you believe that it's appropriate for this, this track of land not to be zoned agricultural? What do you wish for it to be zoned as?
Single family, single family.
Right? And, and is your intention to develop this into parcels for single family development? However, you're, you're not building small lots. What type of lots are you, do you intend to build?
It's one acre plus, and these houses will be all brick. Um, uh, and they'll be, uh, probably starting at like fourteen hundred and fifty square foot up to two thousand to four hundred square feet.
Hey, now, the urban corridor, which is highlighted in, uh, Mr. Thomas, if you don't mind to help me there, show, show that line. So that urban corridor, as Mr. Thomas highlighted, this track lies within the urban corridor, right?
Yes.
And you and I reviewed the comprehensive plan on multiple occasions. The comprehensive plan dictates this area is appropriate and intended for expansion and growth, right?
Yes, that's the reason we purchased this piece of property for about fifteen.
Because the comprehensive plan dictates that this area is appropriate as a future development for single family residences.
Yes, sir.
You're not attempting to put in commercial property, correct? You're not attempting to put in multifamily property. You're saying, you're very much complying with the dictation of comprehensive plan for future development of area in the county in which it has been identified as an appropriate area for expansion and growth.
Yes, sir.
Right? Is there anything else that you wish to tell us about this area?
Uh, no, we went, you know, we talked to everybody before we purchased this piece of property about entrances and this, and the other, you know, and uh, we know there's people that's always gonna be against it, and we respect, you know, for that. Uh, my son lives there, Mr. J- Jerry Agee is another partner on this. He lives out in there, so we know that, uh, that area. Um, we just know about, uh, when the uh, the bridge is out down there, all this traffic was coming in one way. So we don't feel like there's any kind of traffic concern because now the bridge is there, and half those people are going opposite way. Uh, like I said, we understand that they are concerns, and we're willing to listen to those concerns.
All right, here, uh, at this, are we done?
Uh, I, I, I'll rest with, with this portion.
Uh, at this point, uh, we, well, we can call up people that's.
Asking any questions.
Oh, the end member want to ask you any questions?
I just had a question on lot size. We have one fifteen on there, and there's one seventeen in the application. Is a little part of that upper lot included as well?
Yes.
There's already a house, talking about the square right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's already a house on there. And that, that, that acreage is, you saw, it said one fifteen on there, it said one seventeen over here. I don't know if it's been surveyed to get that exact acreage yet or not, but that's, that's a lot.
Mr. Short, what's the utilities, uh, situation out there? Like water, uh?
We have Softwood Utility companies. They are, they are okay with everything. They're.
Who are the utility companies in Madison?
Cursor Water District, and Bluegrass is probably gonna serve a part of it, and Kentucky Utility is probably gonna serve a part of it.
All of your terms are right, right? You have talked to them. Yeah, it depends on how they're called. Major, something out there, as far as their buildings survive.
Previous owner.
Uh, how long has it been there?
Uh, they had, I don't know, probably fifty years.
They lost, right, for a while.
Yeah. Yes, they had, uh, his mother died, that's the reason they sub.
Did, uh, what kind of farmer did they go there, just hay, or did they raise?
Well, they had some cattle and stuff on it. I think, I think it's six years ago, they just, they told me there's a pig farm on it one time, so, you know. Like I said, I lived down the road there, and, uh, you know, I, I know it's been gone for a long time, not really personally, but I drove by there and, and, um.
Sure. They have a farmer did here lately, they built it around it.
No, no, he just, he got, he had the option, so he, he, right.
So he was able to divert his efforts from farming elsewhere?
You know, that's actually, I don't know what you call that, but I would call it a, it's a commercial property. So, uh, where is it? It's, uh, could you, what's that out?
That's a commercial piece of property.
I don't know how it's, you know, I don't have it.
Well, we're not here to town, you know. They're not a farmer, right? They're not a farmer, right? Um, I think that's all, all, sorry, I won't test that.
All right, is that be good?
Yes, sir.
All right, at this point, uh, we will, uh, we will let, uh, one at a time. Uh, any one here have any comments they'd like to make in regards to the zone change, and they'd like to come up and touch back? Uh, please state your name and address for the bridge.
Shane Masters, one fifty nine Jolly Ridge Road.
I bring your right hand, you wear a yellow coat?
Yes, I do. This is kinda awkward, cause these guys are actually friends of the family, but, uh, I've kinda been an advocate for the community, and a lot of people have reached out to me. They can't be here today, so they had some concerns and wanted to, to lay them out there, uh, in the open. Uh, one, really, the, the number one concern right now is traffic. We did talk about, uh, traffic a little bit, just because um, of the bridge being out and so forth, but in all the new, uh, planning and zoning changes already, with the addition of the Indian Temple, the Goggins Lane traffic, with the new school coming in, uh, we have two subdivisions going in off of Goggins Lane. Uh, anytime there's a major catastrophe, that traffic has to be diverted, uh, it's a very narrow road to divert traffic. Um, the road itself, I live out there, I've probably been ran off the road at least two to three times myself. Um, and that's not these guys' issue, that becomes a county issue. We've got, the roads are so narrow that over the course of fifteen years, we were talking, um, vehicles have gotten bigger. And so cars are much, much bigger, trucks. I drive a full-size truck like Mr. Short, and when they, when you try to pass somebody on the side of the road, it literally pushes you off the road. So the area that they're planning to put the, the development in, uh, there's a really sharp curve right there on Mule Shed Lane. Uh, in that curve, it's actually a blind spot coming around from, from the other side, um, right up on the entrance that they have. So number one reason I'm here today is I have a fifteen-year-old son who will be driving a vehicle in July of this year. And I'm extremely concerned about, one, he being a new driver, and two, trying to navigate a road that can potentially be a, a huge amount of traffic. So I know we have a comprehensive plan in the community to, to divert traffic, but I've been told that we have to be reactive instead of proactive. My concern with that is, when do we become reactive? When my child gets hurt in a car wreck, or your child gets hur- hurt somewhere else? We need to look at a proactive plan as a community for growth and development for these type of, of subdivisions. Um, I love farms, I know Mr. Short also, and Mr. Agee, they love to hunt and fish, and, and they're businessmen. But when it comes to safety, uh, that is a huge concern in the Newbie area. Uh, and they wanted me to at least bring that out and tell you why that's a concern. Another concern is I've been in the housing market for thirty years. I am a sales rep for a company out of Lexington, and we service the manufactured housing industry. That being said, in two thousand eight, uh, these guys are well aware, we had a major housing issue, a major housing crisis. Interest rates are at an all-time high of seven point two five percent to eight percent. Now, if you go back thirty years ago, interest rates were fifteen to twenty percent, and, and it wasn't a problem. But today's problem lies is the average median income for Kentucky is fifty-six thousand dollars. We're building three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollar houses left and right, with house payments of a minimum of two thousand dollars a month, property taxes twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred by the time you're done monthly. People can't afford it, people are buying it, but they can't afford it. So eventually, we're looking at, you know, are, do we have a financial commitment to the development of the subdivision? If we, if we run into another housing crisis, are we committed financially to be able to sell on these lots if they don't sell? Because we have hundreds of homes going in on Goggins Lane. We have hundreds of homes going in, uh, down off the Tanees Creek Road, and schools and everything else. Uh, not to mention, I feel like the county also kinda got behind the, the eight ball a little bit whenever we just put in this new development for a city park with eleven soccer fields, which is gonna continue to, to generate traffic and a lot of other shopping centers and so forth. But then you, you ask yourself, whoa, were we behind the, the eight ball there? Because in Lexington at exit one oh four, they just put in twenty-two soccer fields. So is there that much soccer going on that we need thirty-three soccer fields? Man, if we need thirty-three soccer fields, we're gonna have traffic that, like you guys, have never seen before. Uh, we got school bus traffic, uh, we've already addressed, oh, number one thing too is, is the county is almost broke. They couldn't even approve the sheriff's budget this year. So what are we gonna do about police and fire? Uh, we have, we're ten miles away from a fire hydrant. We're out of there, ten miles. Everything in Newbie will be burnt to the ground by the time EMS or the fire department gets there. Uh, I think growth is good. I'm here to promote growth, uh, fire departments and water infrastructure, you know, we talked about that. Property values of the homes, uh, we're seeing those decline, um, because of the housing market. Uh, I'm excited to see some of the things that they did say, uh, with the size of the lots. Uh, one question I did have that they asked me to bring up is, will there be any blasting in the area? There, there, there won't have to be any blasting, so. Um, that was a lot said. I don't hope I didn't take everybody else's thunder, but, uh, those are just some concerns that we have with growth is good, but are we outgrowing the pace of our community?
Then, then, the next question, who is it?
I just want a question, just to make it clear for the record. The park you were speaking of, the ball fields and things, isn't that a city park and not a county park?
It is. It is a city park.
Just wanna make that clear. And the woes, uh, financial woes of the county are not the financial woes.
That is correct.
I have a question too, you know, you gave us some information about what salaries are now, what interest rates are. What were they back thirty years ago?
I do know that, I do know that.
It was a lot less, I can tell you, because I worked in a bank for.
There were a lot more too, back, uh, probably, they were forty years ago, it probably fit fourteen, fifteen percent.
Yeah, the interest rate was.
Yes, but the difference today compared to the difference then is, back then, the, when the interest rate were fifteen percent, you could buy a house for thirty-nine thousand dollars.
You said your housing prices are a lot higher now?
Tremendously high.
What would make high housing prices lower in some one quarter?
All right, so that would be, just, uh, well, first of all, you have to have inflation's gotta come down, which we're, we're dealing with inflation there. But we're not, we're not faking that.
No. Uh, can you mention the fire hydrants first? Can you, it, it, it subdivision does, if it is, are, are there any show of fire hydrants?
Yeah, there are a fire, that fire flow.
There would be fire flow.
Yeah, and the fire, it's, it's like so far apart.
And what size is the water line down there?
I, I don't answer that. I don't know, but. I, I don't answer that, I don't know, but, straight, straight through lane and Chrisbrook and all those would not have been able to be developed to do that fire flow ever again at that time.
So we do, we'll have fire hydrants and could be part of that, our fire flow in that area, so that.
That, that, that would be part of consideration today, uh, that would be site development, that's, um, basically a building.
Does anyone else have any questions for the witness? All right, thank you, sir.
What size water line do you have?
Uh, sir, you had to come up and address the commission, that's it. I apologize.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Did Wood please state your name and address for the record?
Mall Adams, one oh eight Cedar Lane in Willamette subdivision.
Please write names, you swear to tell the whole truth, the truth?
I do. One of the things that makes hous- housing prices so high is interest rates. That's bottom line.
It's cost, it is a cost, it's a cost.
No, exactly, but it still make, it still makes a homeowner have to pay more money. Anyway, uh, I've got a farm, Crutcher Pike. I've been going up and down Crutcher Pike almost every day for twenty-eight years, and I can tell you, once you get to Mule Shed, you take your life into your own hands, because it is not safe to pass on that road. You've got two extremely high holes that you're over, that you can't see over, and, you know, people won't pull over for you anymore, I mean, people just wanna keep going as fast as they're used to going, and you can't do that on Crutcher Pike. Has anybody been down Crutcher Pike recently and had a pass? I'm sure some of these people have. Is it difficult?
It's, it's extremely difficult.
Uh, one of the questions I have, have you made any recommendations as to what we do to Crutcher Pike now, from Mule Shed down to Tate's Creek?
You know, Virg, you correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, there's one, one issue that we have that we have absolutely no control over, or no input, is the roads.
So who does?
Well, you as a citizen would have to address that with the county official and the state official. They, they give us no control over any road, we don't have any input, I mean, it'd be great if we did.
Well, let's, let's, let's clarify that just a little bit, because we won't let somebody put a subdivision on substandard roads. We make the bill of streets inside subdivision certain way, we regulate turn lanes, both the in and out subdivision, uh, how that road is built within subdivision, uh, what that roadway looks like, so we have some controls over some of the roads directly associated with, with the development set up. Now, what Shannon's talking about is when you get required out in the refering and roads, maybe your feeder roads into this area or something, state highways for certain, we don't have any, any control over, but, um, his point, I think, is that, that the county would have to, um, and the county's not in the road buil- building business, right? They want the developer to widen the road, so if that road wasn't wide enough to throw that subdivision, that would be on the developer, it would be the developer's expense. The county, um, is not in a position to go out and widen these roads, um, but we do require certain sized roads directly a- adjacent to the subdivision.
I can remember one day, few years back, I asked a guy putting in a road going up the subdivision next to me down there on Crutcher Pike. I says, why is this road better than Crutcher Pike? He said, because they forfeited on the bond.
Yeah. Yeah, that's another thing, another, another good one, she mentioned the bond, so the developer in this case would be required to put up a bond or, or a derivative letter of credit that says if, if the economy, um, goes bad and he decides he wants to, to, to back out of this thing after it gets built or before it's, uh, completely done, um, and people are living in there, then the county has the money, uh, from that bond that he puts up to go in and finish the subdivision, so it doesn't just get abandoned and lay out there, you know, brown weeds and everything, the county would at that point go in and, and, and finish the development.
So there's no, nobody has proposed that they're, we're gonna widen Crutcher Pike from Mule Shed down to Tate's Creek?
Well, so, I mean, this, uh, I don't wanna get off of the wings too much, but I, I have been in meetings at the state level and the local level with, um, it's called the West Richmond Traffic Study, everybody's mentioned Goggins Lane, everybody's mentioned Barnes Mill, everybody's mentioned Tate's Creek, you're absolutely right. The growth that's occurring in that area, um, is, is big, right? Um, so, uh, to their credit, the state doesn't usually do this, but the state commissioned a study, um, that basically ran from I seventy-five, uh, actually to Clority, uh, Barnes Mill out to, um, I think they went to Willamette, they went to Barnes Mill effect, and then Goggins Lane, Tate's Creek, all the way over to Jack's Creek. And, 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 uh, the city had their input, county had their input, the state did their inputs, uh, that study's getting ready to come out. There was, there, there was plans in there or, or discussions in there about everything from conflicted roof building, uh, eighty-seven exit, um, to widening Barnes Mill, all the way to Silver Creek, uh, widening Tate's Creek, um, building a new road across country from Barnes Mill, across Tate's Creek, over to Jack's Creek, so there are plans, um, on how to alleviate some of that, some of that traffic that's coming, um, it, it wasn't feasible as part of this study, um, to widen Crutcher Pike where you're talking about, because it's not a very good route, right? Very narrow, it's got, it's got some, some major hill sides on both sides, has some creeks on, on one of the other sides, so they prefer a different route, uh, when I say cross-country, um, from Barnes Mill down to Tate's Creek and then all over to Jack's Creek to try to get some of that park traffic and some of that doggy's lane traffic out of there, give them another route, so one of the, one of the suggestions was, uh, Goggins Lane, building a connector from the old Goggins Lane, y'all know where I'm talking about, new Goggins Lane's a nice big wide, three-lane road, old Goggins is a terrible road, right? So they're talking about improving, get that Goggins over to Lexington Road, so there are some plans, there are some discussions being had about all that, because the county recognizes it, uh, the city recognizes it, um, and, and, and at this point, even the state has recognized it, so those conversations are being had, it's just they did not believe that, that the benefit versus cost of that, the bigger stretch that you're talking about, uh, having a benefit for the.
So, but in the meantime, we put all these people in danger, because a lot of these people that are gonna live over there, they're gonna go down Crutcher Pike, down to Tate's Creek. Because if they live, if they live, work in Lexington.
I would go that way, if I lived there, I thought I got a farm mill in there.
Such a hodgepodge now, especially getting to the interstate. But anyway, we should, I would think we should think about the roads, number one, you know, because number, I mean, you're, you're planning on putting a entrance, I believe, on Crutcher, is that correct?
Yes, over there.
Has anybody seen that entrance?
Right across the street from me.
At the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, it's the bottom of the hill, it's high on both sides of the entrance, you've got maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet. Sight, sight, when you come out of that exit, how say, I thought we had, had a plan that did away with that here years ago. As far as the entrance to a subdivision.
That entrance to the subdivision would be something considered, not considered.
Obviously, it's a, it's a horrible place.
Definitely a site development.
No, no, Barnes Mill, or I mean, uh, Mule Shed is fine, but that is not.
Or, um, you know, kind of how you responded to Shannon and the strategy question, is, is Crutcher Pike, uh, of your, bringing the other roads that you service this zone change request, maybe you could handle the standards, the end standards for, uh, it is kind of.
Now, I think because of the number of lots, uh, maybe some turn lane requirements, uh, both the in and outs of the vision.
Both themselves.
Yeah, the, the location of those entrances, uh, and I think Mr. Short was just being proactive by going ahead and, and contacting the road department. Uh, my, uh, at, at the end of the day, if he's not successful in this zone change request, he built a nice new entrance to his barn down there, but the, the actual location of the entrances, the design and the construction type of those entrances, um, all, all that'll be addressed at the site development plan, we're just here tonight to try to determine that this area is appropriate for single-family. The detail, the details of, of roadside and such as the sewer and water line and all that will all go into the site development, the actual, how, how do you get it that developed?
Does anybody know whether the water line is four or six inches?
I would, I would assume that it's six inches, but if it's not, again, that's something that the developer would have to address. This, this body's not gonna approve a preliminary plat that doesn't have a sufficient water line, so I, I would, I would think on Mr. Short, he researched that before he put the money down and wrote the check and said, okay, I'm not gonna have to run a six-inch water line all the way from Barnes Mill.
The reason I, the reason I asked that question, we have a four-inch in our subdivision, and I know you even know if they've ever been uh, opened up to see if there's any water there, because we had a fire here a few years back, they had to haul water.
But what you have to remember is Willamette was, was developed and built prior to Madison County, having any subdivision regulations whatsoever. Smith, not Smith, Stacy Lane and Millstone subdivision and Chrisbrook and Western Hills, well, I'll leave Western Hills out, cause that's a different animal. But those were built after Madison County had zoning regulations, and that six-inch water line requirement has always been in there, it's never changed. So that's why I believe it's probably got a six-inch line, but again, if it doesn't, he won't be able to develop this subdivision without it.
Okay, well, I do know that the water line in front of my farm, six inches, because I allowed him to come across my property to put it in, but from there on, this is down on Crutcher Pike on the bottom. Yeah, and anyway, I do know that it ends in front of my farm, and the four inch comes down the hill from up on top. So that would make me think that maybe all there is up there is four inch.
I, I think.
If, if he said it's six, six inches.
But again, if it's not, that's something that we'll address if they're, at the next step.
My, my biggest concern though, is that entrance on Crutcher Pike, that is so dangerous.
And again, um, our road supervisor, he's in charge of signing off all of that, he has criteria that he go by from a standpoint of, of the lit of it, uh, some of that's in the regs too, um, sight lines, visibility, that kind of thing, um, so that, that'll be his call with the approval of this, this body as well, but again, that'll be at the, at the site development stage.
One of the other, my other concern is, there are even more subdivisions planned than the ones we've talked about. I know there's one in behind the subdivision that's going in behind us, that was on the long farm, there's another long down coming off of Curtis Pike that's gonna connect to that, also all that housing that's gonna be across from the old sewer plant. That's gonna be three to five hundred in there.
Yeah, and all that's in the city limits.
Okay, but then there's also apparently some more down on, uh, Tate's Creek too. It's coming.
Yeah, well.
And I mean, I, I don't see where we can support all this.
That's a huge problem.
But, yeah, but we need to do something about our infrastructure. It's just crazy.
Yeah, so these are acre lots, they'll be set, there's no sewer available out there, and that's why a minimum loss size in our regulation is one acre and the absence of sewers, so he would not be able to go any smaller than the one acre.
Does anybody have any questions for the witness? Do you have anything?
No, just travel down, uh, Crutcher Pike from Mule Shed. See what you think about it.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, we were organized, uh, does anybody else have anything different to say?
I just wanna head to it.
All right, this. Say your name and address for it.
Katie Brierings, I've got a, a two-hundred chase name.
And, uh, where are you writing? You swear to tell the whole truth, the truth?
Okay, I got one question, I heard that they're talking about putting a traffic light down there in Mule Shed and Crutcher Pike. Is that right?
Maybe one at Barnes Mill.
Okay.
Mule Shed and Crutcher right there in Kirk?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Another evidence is talking about cleaning their bits roll out and, and opening that up and increasing some visibility in that curb, because that is. There are Sue's old pine trees and everything.
That curb, right?
Yeah, yeah, I live right straight across, I live straight, straight across from Sue Long's place. Yeah, and then the, this is her home.
Hmm, yeah, was.
Yeah. But, uh, another thing is, the size of the houses. You go and put fourteen hundred square foot, fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot home in there, and that's gonna do nothing but decrease the property value of all the other houses around there.
It's subdivision or subdivision planning, it's not even a consideration, size of houses is not a consideration.
Well, I'm just bringing it up so it's on record, okay, another thing is, uh, what he was just saying, gentleman was up here, I've been exposed a lot of how many times of being hit by cement trucks, dump trucks, and everything else, because my property is just kinda, well, in fact, the, the street is going in front of my neighbor here, Ms. Harris. Her house is, the property is right straight across from where that road's at, and it has nothing but a death trap. And I wanna know who in here is gonna be the one that's gonna go to the family's home and say, well, your, uh, husband, your child, your son, your daughter is laying in the morgue because of that road. That road is terrible. And it's pathetic, that's the only way to put it. That road needs to be, i- i- if you're gonna put that road where it's at, the guy's doing a good job on doing his work out there, but still, it's a blind spot. And her mailbox has been hit because people, a lot of people, when they're coming back towards Barnes Mill, they, they're not descending on that hill, going up on that hill. I scare my wife to death every day when I go out there, because I, I hug Claire to the right, I'm going over almost in the grass, and she's, she's, shudders every time I, but I'm not gonna get hit, it's like, yeah. That, that's a dangerous intersection, and that's that whole road.
Everything in here.
Nothing to be done about it, he's, he's there. That's, that's my big.
Does anybody have any questions for the witness?
Like I said, I, I don't wanna be the person that has to go and tell somebody that, that their kid just got killed on that road.
Yes, fine. He just quit, uh, sir.
One question, one quick question.
Yeah.
Have you gone to the authorities that are responsible for that road and asked them to improve that road, especially that intersection, i.e. have you gone to the fiscal court or have you gone to?
No, I haven't been to any courts or anything, I, I, I called up the, the county one time and said something about the road, uh.
You need, you need, you actually need to make a formal complaint, uh, appearing in front of that board and asking for their help in improving that road.
All right.
So they're the ones responsible.
Another county's gotta take care of it.
It, it's a county road.
But, uh, you know, the, the plan, not the language, but the fiscal courts, uh, you know, the member of the fiscal court, when they have meetings, that, they are the ones that would make a decision to spend the money on, on the county road now, I'd say. Uh, you know, doing upgrade and change for that, that's.
Uh, I've dealt with people like I've before and, uh, a lot of people, they, the dollar means too much to them, they're not gonna do anything until somebody gets hurt.
Does anybody else have anything different to say? We'll recognize, we'll recognize, I'll let the line two go right here. Like you just made right here, I'll let you go back.
Okay. My name's Shirley, it's, uh, two oh one Eagle Road.
And would read right anyway, you swear to tell the whole truth, the truth?
I have one question, restate the purpose of this meeting, just for my clarification.
This meeting is to explore a zone change from UC seven to UC one, uh, UC one, the single-family, uh, housing, um, and this meeting is to determine whether or not it's feasible or, if it takes the county, uh, if it meets their criteria to be selling single bed house.
The thing that concerns me is that the decision is already, I think, predetermined for this to go ahead, because you don't have any say about the roads that surround the property. Is that, that's a correct statement?
Well, we, we.
That's not what I'm wishing to hear.
Well, you said that internally of the.
Well, the, 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 the roads are front on this development as well.
All right, but only a small section of it, of the subdivision.
Up to the main house.
So they will come, so they'll come to the Crutcher Park all the way, from, from Barnes Mill?
Crutcher Park back to the, to the nearest, to the nearest twenty-foot line.
So they will, so they will widen that.
No, Crutcher Park is already.
It's already sixteen foot.
Twenty foot.
Twenty foot.
Yeah.
That's, that is a question that I had as.
That means we're right here.
That's why I'm asking for clarification.
I figured it does, it had, it needs to, having their eighteen dollars for the four.
But additional eighty-seven homes going in, coming back and forth, so your decision is to morally decide whether or not this is going to meet the needs of people who's surrounding the area? And also, the county.
You say morally decide?
Well, it is, to me, it's, it's kind of like being certain that we're taking care of everything.
Yeah, so, so their job, I'm not gonna turn it aside, I'm honestly.
I understood that.
This thing, their job, their job is to look at the application and do the test on everybody, and then see if that application and the facts, uh, I mean, again, with the counties, two, two different things are our specific regulations for, for land use and the land use map, and then also a, a very more of a comprehensive plan, which is sort of the, is sort of the, the, uh, over, overarching constitution for, uh, our development and our zoning and our subdivision regulations. So one of the big parts of the comprehensive plan, we just adopted one, a new one fairly recently, that's the urban corridors. And so we may have heard some questions I had about whether or not this was in the urban corridors. That's sort of a, a important thing because in the urban corridor, the attorney for the applicant talked about it a lot. That's, that's a place where the county wants to vote to be as opposed to, versus outside the urban corridor. We don't want everything spreading out and getting ahead of where our resources are. So, this is an area that's in the urban corridor. So, that's, that's one thing that's been concerned. The other things are, you know, what, whether or not the roads are widened up according to the regulations. They don't get a substitute better, better judgment or their personal opinions for what the regulations are.
So, you mentioned the roads. So, the one that's going, all right, the one coming on, onto Curtis Pike meets the requirements, right? Back to Barnes Mill, correct?
That's, that's.
All right. So, the other one that was coming out on Mule Shed.
Yeah.
So, that one's gonna.
All that is widened when Christopher appointed it.
That's sixteen, sixteen feet, twenty feet?
Yeah. But again, but again, but again, it's, it's not, the developer will have to widen that. It is obvious to him.
Okay.
That's right. So, that, that will lock them up as part of that site development plan. It'll bring, it'll bring, uh, doc, this is just, what y'all are seeing here is just a, a concept and I'm happy to pass this around to anybody that's seen it. But this is just, this is like to have a, a, a concept of, of what it might look like. When he comes in here with an actual site development plan, it'll, it'll show the street cross-sections. It'll show how wide they are. It'll show specific lot lines. It'll be much more detailed because that's what they'll then take and do their construction from. All this is just to kind of give you an idea of what it might look like. Um, so the planning commission comes to kind of know what, what is thinking.
So, at that time then, that would be if y'all go ahead and vote that, to move forward, then you have to.
So, let me tell you across this, so everybody here knows what happens. The planning commission takes the application. They hold the public hearing. If they're doing the hearing testimony, uh, look at the evidence, they're kind of like a jury. Then they make, then they make a decision on a recommendation to the fiscal court. They don't have the authority to change the zoning map because the only people can do that is the governing body because it is a law. We have to write a law to change zoning there. So, this body, based on the, the evidence and the public hearing that they're conducting right now, will make that recommendation to the fiscal court. Then the fiscal court will have two public hearings, not public hearings, it'll have two readings because an ordinance takes two readings, right, to pass. So, they'll have the first reading, which is just kind of a, a procedural thing. And then at the second reading, there'll be comments. They'll take comments from the public again, much like we're doing tonight, if, if somebody doesn't agree with their recommendation. Um, and, and this recommendation could go either way. Um, and, and, and people can come and speak for it. Um, people can come and speak against it. And then the fiscal court, uh, will make the final decision on whether or not.
May or may not.
And then, once, once that decision is made, if, if they make the decision to approve it, then the developer will go into the stages of, of actually designing the final layout, after doing the infrastructure in, or, or coming to get approval to put the infrastructure in, you know, kind of thing. So, tonight is really more about, is this area suitable for it? And then the, the nuts and bolts and the details of what it looks like will come at a later stage.
Uh, live field back there. I mean, I mean, while we're just on the road, please tip over the podium, please. Would you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Clinger, uh, two one, one eight Marengo. I'm in the Chrisbrook Estates. My wife and I.
Please raise your hand. If you were to tell the whole truth or nothing but truth?
I do.
Do you need?
I believe a lot of people have already said a lot of what I wanted to say. Um, in fact, just now, she mentioned how you look at this committee. I, I was gonna ask you originally what the purpose of this was and you just explained, make a decision on what was gonna happen. Like she said, the decision's already made. I can tell by the line of questions. Then when you ask people to speak, you'll, you'll say, well, this is legal, this is legal. It's legal, but I'm not a farmer. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not even from here. I'm from California. And, uh, California, where, where, where you used, you used to live, you couldn't go a mile in half an hour. I mean, it was terrible. This place is starting to look more and more like California to me. We moved here fourteen years ago. I loved this area. I loved being here, the, both the farms and everything. Didn't see that back there. Lived there almost all my fifty years. Here, it's different. And I see it just being overdeveloped. I've had to turn around twice now, going down a pound, turn around twice and come back home because I couldn't make it. Too much traffic. And that's just what, right now. So, I guess I'm just speaking, uh, emotionally from somebody who, who doesn't live here. And I know farms can't sell anymore. I know you gotta sell them to developers because that's the only way you can make money anymore. And I, I understand that. But our area, like everybody said, is a bad area to put another development. Our, our area, our Chrisbrook Estates, it was there when we moved. And I didn't buy it. I mean, you could say, well, I'm a, you know, I'm a hypocrite because I bought into a place that was developed from a farm. I did buy into a place. It was a four-year-old house. The place was already there. But it's, it's just getting terrible. It's getting worse and worse. And I just personally don't like to see that. And I know this isn't gonna change anybody's mind here, but I just thought I'd give my opinion, so, that's it. Is your objection to the development in general, with traffic? The development, development in general, the traffic, everybody's already stated. That's obvious. If you lived there, you knew it. And, and, and I do, uh, a friend of mine, a neighbor of mine, takes me to somebody who owns a farm. I don't own a farm. Takes us to that farm. I love driving around that farm. It's a hundred and fifteen acres. And if I, I, I keep telling my wife thirty years ago, if I'd have known, you know, if, if it lived like this here instead of in California, we'd have been here, we'd have owned the farm. But unfortunately, we didn't make that kind of money. And it's thirty years too late, so. Um, so it's just in, in general, it's to development. It's in more development. We've already got a ton of development out here.
Do you see a, do you see a lot of empty houses, uh, empty houses in Madison County?
I don't see any houses for sale around where we live.
They're all sold.
Yeah?
I guess it's, I mean.
Okay, well, there's a big development.
See, but I don't.
I'm just asking physically.
I, I don't think, just because there's a lot of houses sold, that means bring more, build more houses, bring more people and more congestion and more traffic and everything else. Make the quality of life here lower than it is now. That's my opinion. I mean.
Can I add a question?
Yeah.
The, on any property, I'll take you to this party here. I mean, what, with the county growing the way that it does and the need for homes and, and places to live, what would, what would make that suitable in any area for, you know, most, a lot of people come in and say, well, we want to conserve the farm. We want to preserve the land. But, you know, our owner, you know, he wants to sell his property for what, you know, he can't do that. And, you know, if the property meets the criteria for the zone change, we, the county's paying.
See, that's another thing though is it's the zone change. It's legal. It's this and that. That, to me, I, I mean, I know that's your argument. I know the other side's got a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer. We don't have lawyers. We just have houses to, you know, we live around there. That's all, so.
Well, what would come to doing that?
What, what?
Yeah, I mean, in your opinion, where could we do one? I mean, we're in the county, not pretty much in the county, but, you know, the county's growing. We have to have homes. Uh, you know, the need, they state the need for homes is there. And, you know, what comes to where we can play?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. Um, I, I can't tell you what a good place to build out houses was. I can't tell you. And I, I can't tell you the only two or three subdivisions where we are, and they've been there for a long, long time. Uh, or at least a long time compared to, you know, and they weren't built since we've been out here. But I can't tell where a good and bad place to build is. And I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people that say, we, we don't want it in our backyard. We don't want to build it here. But you wanna be Lexington? I mean, I don't, I don't particularly, if I wanted to live in Lexington, I'd move to Lexington. And that's what this place is turning into, so.
Does anybody else have any questions for the witness? All right, we're gonna close the floor.
You need to laugh and not do something like that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was about to, I'm out of practice. Uh, would the record be, please come, uh, like come up and, uh, give a revocation for questions, any comment or debate?
Well, I'll stand on the previous test.
Does any member have any questions? Does any of the members have some comments? Uh, if not, then we can air a vote.
I just had one question.
Yeah.
Can you ask if we have one more question?
We, well, that was for the committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not an opinion. I'm not an opinion against the law. I just wanted to ask you a question. All right, sorry.
You already told me that.
I just had a question. You mentioned the road width is twenty foot wide. Um.
I mentioned it would have to be twenty foot wide to be able to do this development.
Okay, so, that being said, uh, a new Chevy truck is, leaves a foot and four inches on each side of the road for anybody to get off the road if you had two of them passing. That's all I wanted to say. And I don't know who makes those rules or changes. That needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Uh, if you are opposed or opposed to comments, uh, again, uh, does any member have any questions?
I just wanted to point out that, uh, what, and we have this every time, everybody, uh, every, every time we have one of these, we get a crowd of people just like you. And I'm very, and I think we all are extremely very sympathetic with your view. But, but the truth is, we just got finished with our training and we, we understand what, what we're supposed to do. Our job isn't to decide whether that's a good development. And our job isn't to do that. That's what we're, we're, we're trying to do. We haven't come here as you, as, I, I hear this accusation frequently that we've already made up our minds. Well, no, all I ever get is the packet and I study the packet. And I don't get a call from anybody. If you go and get calls, I don't get a call from anybody, uh, on either side. Uh, so, I want you to be aware that we, that, that's not the, the issue. What we've got, what we're trained to do, what we're supposed to do, is we're supposed to look at the, how the, this county has been planned. And this county has planned, in this case, for an urban quarter, to place future housing. And we're supposed to, to see that there, you know, that, that there's, uh, a plan for place minimal road footage. Uh, at this, at this time, when we look at the subdivision plat, we have other issues. But we don't, uh, someone even used the word moral. Uh, we don't, that's not our job to determine whether it's immoral or immoral. And because these aren't moral and immoral decisions necessarily, the decision was made when they made the urban quarter. And all we have to do and all our job is, does this fit the urban quarter? That, uh, we just make a, give an advisory opinion to the fiscal court. It meets the minimum criteria. Now, that doesn't mean we don't, uh, don't, uh, agree with some of the things you were saying. Uh, you're gonna get a chance to go to fiscal court and talk to them about the roads. That road situation needs to be resolved. And not, not just because it's subdivision, but because it's just a dangerous spot. I've driven there, uh, quite a few, drive, been by there quite a few times. Uh, to the, I drove down to the Newby store. Uh, it's, uh, so I want you to understand. It seems like every time we have one of these, people walk out and they think, oh, they've already made up their minds and they've already, uh, been contacted by somebody or somebody else. And that's not happening anymore. We're just trying to follow what the law is and what the law wants this advisory board to do. And that's to look and see whether or not it fits within, the plan fits within the urban core and are, are their roads to and fro. Did, roads are there to and fro and the urban core is fits within the urban core. And that's what they, the plan was. A master plan in Madison County was to have housing in this area.
Would it be possible to put your name and phone number on the signs that you post for these meetings?
Sir, uh.
We're not, we're not going to.
You're not supposed to contact anyone. You can call me at the end. Sorry, I can't talk to me.
The name, the phone number of my office is on the sign. Uh, we did feel several phone calls. And, and just to follow on what Judge Cloud said, um, they don't know about these ahead of time. I know about it just because I have to from an administrative, uh, facilitation standpoint. But they don't find out about it until the Friday before the meeting, uh, when I deliver that package you see in front of them there. And, and it's very limited. It has an agenda that says, uh, the zone change and, and they really don't know anything. Deliberately done that way so they don't form any preconceived opinions for that. But I often come in here and have been counseled by our council. They need to act as a, a jury and listen to the evidence from everybody, both sides, and then make a decision, uh, for that, not based on phone calls ahead of time or any ideas that they have or did. So, that's just following up on what Judge Cloud said. Uh, nobody, uh, had any previous knowledge of.
All right. So, that being said, leave your, back motion. I'm thinking unless you approve the change for, uh, Crutcher Pike to UC seven, you do. And, uh, your finding of fact would be based upon period testimony, uh, in the regard of property in urban core.
Mr. Chairman, we have proposed findings of fact in the, uh, the county application. Would you be in agreement with those?
Yes.
Is that a good juvenile for?
We are agreeing with them. Yes, I think that is, that is, that on the findings, fact, testimony today, that would be adequate for us.
All right, we have a motion to, a, a motion to approve the zone change from UC seven to UC one. If you want to call it up. I'm clear, I'm clear, I'm clear. They're both kind of safe. I'm, I'm behind. All right, thank you. Please, yeah, ahead. All right, if you would, please call it up.
All right, Adam.
Yes.
Bill Cloud.
Yes.
Bill Buchanan.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Shannon King.
Yes.
Well, I just, again, this is a recommendation to this court. You often call my office. You can call the judge's office. Uh, or you can watch online for agendas to get posted on there. Uh, it's possible when we're on next meeting. Possibly, because the following may just depend on when we get paperwork done, but, uh, following any time off.
There'll be two readings and there'll be public. And you can go there and your business is just open and they can hold them. Is there any more readings coming for?
Four.
That's all we got. That being said, motion to adjourn, being over.
Motion to adjourn. See you.
Bill Cloud.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Bill Buchanan.
Yes.
Doug Fritz.
Yes.
Shannon King.
Yes.